Now we'll move to our regularly scheduled city council study session. And we'll begin again with, and to be stated, we have Vice Mayor Glover, who is out of town, and we have Councilmember Summers and Councilmember Benelli that are joining us on the phone. And so we'll begin this study session with, to item 1A is to hear presentation, discuss, and provide direction on the 2014 utility bond proposal. And feel free to introduce yourselves.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Candace Canistrada, Budget Director.
Dan Clevinger, Water Resources Department Director.
Frank McCray, Energy Resources Department Director.
And today we've brought with you, with us today is our proposal for 2014 utility systems bond election. One of the things that we've, you've heard from us over the last few months, we've been talking about our capital improvement program. As a reminder, our capital improvement program is basically our planning device, our planning program, where we look at the infrastructure needs in the City of Mesa over the next five to eight to 10 to 20 years out. Take a look at what those needs are and be able to plan appropriately to make sure that we have the financial mechanisms in place to be able to, to address those issues as they come up. Some of the things that we've talked about over the last few months is we've talked about what a capital improvement program is, which is basically investing in the City of Mesa. That's what a capital improvement program is. Some of the things we invest in is to make sure that we are replacing items as they age and able so that we maintain our reliability of our services. Excuse me, we also plan for growth or development within the city. And we also plan for our future customer growth or demands that our customers may have going forward. Our last, this one particular we're talking about this morning is our utility systems. Our last election for bonds, for bond authorization was in the fall of 2010 for our utility systems. During that one, again, during that election, we addressed some of our concerns based on maintaining the infrastructure, the reliability of those systems for our customers, as well as looking at our development or our growth areas. Some of those areas from the 2010 authorization allowed us to respond to First Solar when they came to the city, looking for additional demands in an area that we did not have infrastructure at the time. Some of those 2010 authorization allowed us to respond to that economic growth and economic demands in those areas. As we go forward, this particular 2014 proposal also addresses those same areas. What we're looking at, again, is investment back in the City of Mesa, maintaining our infrastructure that's aging, as well as addressing those growth areas, those growth demand areas where we may not have services, but we have businesses or residences or developments that want to come into that particular area. So what you're going to hear this morning is really an overview or a summary of those types of projects that are included in this particular proposal. Some of them you have heard before, as we've reviewed both the water and the energy resources areas. And we're going to kind of walk through those again. There are a lot of slides, but please know that there are a lot of pictures and a lot of graphs, and you have seen them before. So again, we're going to kind of go through and give you a high level. We wanted to make sure that we put this all together in one package. So again, also citizens who are interested in this area, and maybe they did not see the discussions that we've had previously, we wanted to make sure that it was all in one area, one place, they could get one overview of really what we're talking about for this proposed 2014 bond election. So on that note, I'm going to hand it over to Frank.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. For our, our proposed bond authorization, we have three categories of projects. You can see those indicated there on slide six. In terms of life cycle replacement, these are basically investments in the replacement of existing infrastructure. This allows us to continue to ensure we have a safe, reliable, and efficient system. As the equipment and infrastructure approach the end of their useful lives, we step our inspections up and make sure that we're identifying any type of equipment or infrastructure that's starting to show signs of wear and tear and possibly need for replacement. So this category allows us to have the funds necessary to, to make those types of replacements. Next category is a system and reinforcement. So this is a category or an investment type which allows us to identify, gee, things have changed a little bit from what our initial plans were. Customers are growing faster, they're adding appliances, they're adding another module of manufacturing to their operations, so it's increasing the demands. So this allows us to meet those requirements. Oftentimes, we'll integrate these types of projects with ones where we know that there's imminent forecasted growth in an area, so we'll combine them. We'll really be able to save some money by integrating those types of projects. And then there's the, the new developments that arise. And our electric service territory, it's kind of unique. It's, it's mostly associated with infill development, redevelopment, and reuse. We're also anticipating some growth opportunities that are associated with transit-oriented This slide here, on, on slide 10, is an indication of what our prior bond authorizations were for electric. Most of the funds from these authorizations were invested in replacement of aging infrastructure, as well as building some new infrastructure to meet growing customer requirements. But for the most part, these, these investments have essentially left most of our system in like-new condition. We've done a lot of replacement of our system since the 2006 authorization. Here's a map of our electric service territory. It's about five and a half square of miles. We serve almost 16,000 customers. A couple of things to note on this map is the Rogers substation over northeast of University and Stapley. That's a, a substation where we bring in our power supplies from the competitive markets and distribute that around our system through that 69 KV loop. The other notable facilities on there are those substations. The 4 KV substations are in red. Those will be de-energized and the sites will likely be reused once we complete the conversion of our distribution system from 4 KV to 12 KV. This slide is a generic utility network. That Rogers substation that we indicated on the prior slide in the map, that's, equates to point B on this diagram. And then those 4 KV and 12 KV substations equate to that distribution substation adjacent to point D on this network. In terms of life cycle replacement, the, the one category I'd like to highlight here is substation equipment. Of those four 12 KV substations, each substation has two transformers. Two of those transformers in those four substations are nearing 40 years of age. While all of our tests show that they're in good condition, there is some reason to be prepared to replace a substation once it's hit 35 years of age. So we have money in this proposal to replace the, those transformers and the associated equipment in the event they start showing signs of deterioration. The other area that's a significant investment opportunity is our underground cable systems. We've not shown any signs of any significant failures that indicate that we're going to have widespread failures, but our cable, some of our cable is beginning to be at an age where we anticipate that we could see some of that. So we're going to be assessing the condition of that cable and making sure that we do a replacement before failure rather than waiting for catastrophic failures to occur. System reinforcement, this will be primarily focused on underground conversions, so converting overhead distribution lines to underground. We're, we're looking to prioritize these investments in areas where our overhead systems are prone to outages, either because of vegetation, such as where trees grow a lot faster, vegetation grows faster, which cause outages. Outages that are, are areas that are prone to outages from weather, so tree limbs or palm fronds, or just general wind characteristics causing our wires to slap together. Those areas will be prioritized for undergrounding. Another criteria would be if we have a lot of animal out, animal-related outages. Other criteria include, what's the largest number of people that are going to be benefited from this underground conversion aesthetics? Is there an area that is prone to animal-related outages? So those are the types of criteria that we're, we're looking into. We also have, one of our substations, 4 KV substations, is going to be converted to a pocket park. There's a lot of overhead infrastructure adjacent to the Moore substation. So we're going to be looking to invest the money into taking that infrastructure below ground adjacent to the Moore substation. Slide 16 is a, excuse me, slide 15 is a, a picture of before and after on Mesa Drive at 8th Avenue. So you can see the amount of improvements in the aesthetics of that location by the conversion of the overhead to underground. And then slide 16 is a, a map of our system, which shows the mix of overhead and underground. We have about 54% of our distribution system is actually underground, so there's a lot of our system that you can't see. Of course, the overhead system is much more visible. In, in terms of where we see our infill and new development, the, the current extension of the light rail, the central main extension goes, Central Mesa Extension goes up to about Mesa Drive, and so that's right through the, the heart of our electric service territory. And we'll still have some of the Gilbert Road extension as well in our, our service territory. So we're starting to see a lot of interest from our economic development colleagues about where they can find development in the downtown Mesa that's in our electric service area, as well as other transit-oriented developments such as Encore, et cetera. The other item I'd like to point out on this slide is a lot of what we're hearing from customers and from economic development folks is, a lot of businesses really want to make sure that they have a green renewable supply of electricity. So in addition to our renewable portfolio that we currently have, which is about 20% renewable, we want to be able to invest in solar, which is a lot of what our customers are also seeking now as to where they locate. So this would allow us to invest in some solar facilities in, in the city's electric service area. So the summary of our 2014 authorization for the electric utility is right about 27 million, and you can see almost half of that is in the system reinforcement area. A lot of that's going towards the expansion of our underground system and the conversion of overheads to underground systems. Turning to the gas utility, our prior authorizations, most of those funds were used to replace aged infrastructure. Most of those projects were also done in, in joint department projects with transportation and water resources. The other major, majority of those authorizations were spent on extending services to new customers. Slide 20 is our map of our electric, or, excuse me, our gas service area. We serve the, the majority of the City of Mesa's city limits. You can see that in the yellow area there. And then we also have a service area that we call Magma Service Area, which is southeast of the city limits and serves part of Pinell County. This is a diagram similar to the one we used for electric. Please note that that indication in the middle of that diagram, the city gate station, that's essentially where our natural gas supplies are transported over interstate pipelines to our natural gas distribution system. The City of Mesa has five distinct gate stations where we connect with El Paso Natural Gas' Interstate Pipeline System to bring our gas supplies to our customers. These are the, the general categories of our life cycle replacements. Most of these are replacement of aging infrastructure, and we do a lot of projects still with joint projects with the Water Resources Department, Transportation Department. So that, that really saves our customers a lot of money by doing it that way. In terms of reinforcement, we, we see a lot of times our demands increase because customers are adding appliances, swimming pool heaters, our customers are greatly expanding a restaurant. So we'll see some increases in our demands that we haven't anticipated. We've also had some, some very extreme cold weather, and so that causes what we call our design day requirements to increase. So these types of projects allow us to reinforce our system, make it more resilient to those types of changes in our customers' demands so that we can meet those requirements. We'll also oftentimes integrate this type of a project with projects that we anticipate needing to serve new customers and new developments. Our gas system customer demand is quite a bit different than electric, because electrics kind of in a island, if you will. The, the gas system growth that we see is of more typical utility growth, where a resident development will begin developing, will extend our service to that development, and then there'll be subsequent commercial development associated with the residential expansion. So most of our growth-type related projects are associated with that type of development. There is one area that's a pretty exciting and evolving market, and that's the compressed natural gas vehicles. So on slide 25, you can see the solid waste department's new compressed natural gas trucks pulled up to the time fill station. So these trucks fill up basically on an overnight basis. To the left of that picture, you see the temporary mobile CNG fueling station that we've acquired. And so the, the purchase of that equipment, the lease of that equipment, the operation of an installation is really helping us learn a lot and, and gain a lot of expertise in the compressed natural gas field. We're seeing a lot of interest in local fleets starting to expand because manufacturers are increasing the number and type of vehicles that can be fueled with compressed natural gas. So this is clearly a, a good market opportunity for us to expand our system.
Question, Councilmember Cabot.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Have you identified the sites where you ultimately want to locate the fueling stations, if you have the participation by the local company fleets or just private customers?
The, 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 the two next locations will be at the East Mesa Service Center and the West Mesa Service Center, and those will be primarily to fuel the ongoing conversion of solid waste fleet to compressed natural gas. In terms of fleets outside of the City of Mesa's fleets, we've developed a conceptual idea that's gotten some approval with East Valley Institute of Technology to take the site behind the East Valley Institute of Technology and to the east. And there's a piece of property there that they've conceptually agreed to let us develop a compressed natural gas station. We've got a conceptual design about how to bring fleets from the adjoining areas, primarily Crescent Crown is the, the primary customer that we would first like to serve there. But there's other fleets within the vicinity. This, the school district has a food distribution warehouse adjacent to it, so we've been in contact with the schools about the, the potential to convert their fleet to compressed natural gas. So that's a pretty good ideal site for a cluster of fleets right in that area. Plus, we've got plans to integrate how we operate, maintain both the CNG station and the vehicles into EBIT's automotive technology program. So there's a real good partnership there with EBIT and some of the local dealers that will be maintaining CNG vehicles.
Councilmember Richardson.
Will it be an opportunity for the public to fill there as well?
The, the conceptual design does include a, a way of, of, of getting access to a pump that would be available for the general public.
On the Mesa, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilmember Luna.
Yeah, I was going to ask you about the Mesa Public Schools bus fleet. How's your conversations going relative to that? Because we have a lot of school buses.
Yes, sir. We have had discussions with the fleet directors, with the City of Mesa and other schools. The City of Mesa, City Mesa schools have gone towards propane in certain of their vehicles. There's other vehicles where propane doesn't seem to be the, the viable option, and compressed natural gas is the alternative to diesel. So we're still involved in those discussions. Once we get our permanent stations up and running at both East and Mesa, East and West, we feel like we can demonstrate to them the viability and the feasibility of using compressed natural gas in their vehicles, as we will have been doing it in our solid waste vehicles. We're also in the process of, of having some of Chandler's school buses come on to the Sixth Street Campus and use the temporary station when the solid waste vehicles aren't using it. So there, there's some opportunities there that we're pursuing. So in summary, our 2014 gas utility bond proposal is a little over $59 million. About a third of that in life cycle replacements, a third of that in meeting new customer demands. Of course, those customer demands, those funds won't be spent unless the actual customers materialize and the demand for our services and the demand for the, the, the gas energy is there.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Again, I'm Dan Clevinger with the Water Resources Department. I'll be presenting on the water and wastewater proposed bond projects. Like Frank's presentation, we have three categories as well. You'll see them on the screen. First of which is life cycle. So that's just replacing or rehabilitating aging infrastructure to improve our reliability and prevent our service disruptions. The second category is contractual obligations. These are just commitments we have, legal commitments we have with our partners. These are largely other valley cities, and I'll give you some more detail on that. Next category is customer demand. So this is just meeting the, the needs we have largely in southeast Mesa to provide new infrastructure, and that's going to leverage our commercial economic development opportunities for the city. We've had, here's our history, recent history in our utility bond authorizations. We had back in March 2004, and then two years later in 2006, and then 2010. So a 2014 bond election would keep us on a four-year cycle. When we talk about the water system and the life cycle replacement needs, that largely would include pipeline replacements. That's both standalone projects and, as Frank mentioned, two joint projects with transportation. So when they're there doing their work, we take advantage of that when we have old pipes to replace those. In addition to that, we have upgrades at, including pump stations, wells, reservoirs, and equipment at the Brown Road Plant. Here's just a few slides just to show you kind of the, the scale of the projects out in the field when we're talking about the water system. Here's some impacts, and I'm sure you're all aware of the recent ones we've had. We've had three breaks in the last week and a half, two significant ones, Lindsay and Baseline, and had another one on Horn. I think that one was just north of Southern. It's kind of what it looks like. It's, can be pretty catastrophic. These can be prevented or minimized with reinvestment in the system for aging pipes. Here's a map of our pipe system. Now I see the dark blue lines, the bulk of which are in central Mesa and west. These show our 30-year-old pipes and older. We do have many pipes that are more than 60 years old out in our system.
Question. What's the expected life cycle? I mean, should, should you be alarmed that a bunch of lines are 30 years old? I mean, what, what, I mean, some are 60. What do you expect to get?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Richardson, I think we get 60 and 70 years today with pipes we're installing now. But what has happened is the, the pipes that were replaced some years ago weren't quite as resilient. So there's a variety of different pipes, and they will have different lifespans, but I, I think we can get 60-plus years out today, but many of them are already at their, their life expectancy.
Okay.
This is just a map showing the proposed rehabilitation project. So we've, you see the little, red squares are two treatment plants. The triangles are, are well rehabs, and then the black lines are the pipeline rehabs. So these are our contractual obligations. We jointly own the Val Vista Water Treatment Plant with the City of Phoenix. They operate it. If you've been on Lindsay, south of McDowell, all the way down to Brown, you'll, very disruptive, but very major, important project. That's our transmission lines. That also is in agreement with the City of Phoenix, and that will continue. Phase one's going right now. Phase two will take it to just north of downtown, and phase three takes it over to Longmore. And then in addition to that, we have our White Mountain Apache Tribe Settlement to give us access to water, raw water, that we can treat and deliver to our customers. So this is the, the customer demand in Mesa, again, largely southeast Mesa, but this is, this is, when we bring on additional industrial and residential users in southeast Mesa, if we don't prepare today for our water treatment facility, that could limit growth out there and, and put us in a position where we, we wouldn't be able to accept a, a large employer, for example, in southeast Mesa. And so this is, this is about economic sustainability largely. Here's a map showing our, our water system, where our water supply sources. You'll see the blue, that's the, that comes from the Val Vista Plant. That's the SRP water, or the, coming from the Salt River and the Verde River. The purple is from the Brown Road Plant, existing Brown Road Plant, and that's the CAP water, Central Arizona Project, coming from the Colorado River. You'll see down in southeast Mesa, that open square, that's the proposed location or would be the, the future location of the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant. In addition, you'll see some wells scattered about. That's, of course, another water source. If you focus on the red here in southeast Mesa, that's the service area for the proposed plant, the Signal Butte Plant. I'll get into capacities in just a minute. Here they are. If you look at Val Vista, again, that's a shared plant with the City of Phoenix. That plant produces up to 220 million gallons a day. Mesa's allocation is 90 million gallons. Our current demand's on the order of 70 million gallons, so we do have some capacity there. And then the Brown Road Plant is a 72 million gallon a day plant. Current demand for that service area, largely north, northeast and eastern Mesa, is about 56 million gallons a day. What's important on this slide is the yellow box on the right is the current demand. So Signal Butte Plant is not even built yet. If we move forward, we hope it'll be operational in 2018, but there's already today a 10 million gallon demand for that. That water's coming from Brown Road. So we kind of push the system and, and somehow, some way, get water down to southeast Mesa, but we really are pressing the system a bit to get that water down there. In addition, you know, we have additional wells down there to kind of make up that capacity, but it, timing is critical to get the, the plant built.
Question.
So it just, it wasn't quite clear, is, so is the current demand bar for Brown Road include the 10 million gallons a day for Signal Butte? So is that 56? Does that say 56?
The, the 10 comes from that, so it would be 66. So there's an additional 10 that is moved to, to serve southeast Mesa. And again, these are, this is a, a max day, so this is a peak, peak, kind of a peak demand.
Sure. So, so, so the Brown Road current demand is really 66?
Correct.
And so you're conceptualizing with the Signal Butte?
Yes.
Slide.
That's correct.
Got it? Okay.
Councilmember Luna.
So you're closer to full capacity there than?
On a, on a max day, yes.
Okay.
So hypothetically, if Tesla were to want to set up shop in southeast Mesa, we couldn't accommodate them in terms of our water?
We would accommodate them, it's just a matter of timing.
But what would put him, put the, the system at risk is if you want to jump to slide 44. What would happen is that we would be relying on more and more less reliable sources of water, so we would have to be relying more on well water, which is not as reliable. And then what it does, it just puts at higher risk the system overall, because now, instead of having, we have water rights out of the CAP, but we don't have the capacity to treat it. So without that capacity to treat it and push it through Brown Road Station, we would have to rely more on wells. And to bring in a big manufacturing company, that would be very, you know, that could be a concern because of that reliability.
That would be long-term. Short-term, we could probably, we could cover.
Right now, we'd do it. But if you wanted, if we're looking at them hitting, that's what, and Signal Butte's important not only for manufacturing industrial, which is, you know, that, and creating jobs in that area, which is certainly significant, but even just as both southeast Mesa grows out residentially, which it is, as well as the pressure the Water Resources Department has to, we can't forget northeast Mesa is growing up in the, what's it now, Mount?
Mountain Bridge.
Mountain Bridge area. There's a lot of growth up there, and so there's, continue to be more and more demand to pump water up in that area. And as you can see, like you said, it's, that capacity is 72. Even if you take out what's going to, down to southeast, we're at 56. So that numbers, that number's only going to continue to grow higher. So it, it's needed both because we need to have a source of reliable treatment in southeast Mesa, just with the growth, whether it's residential and certainly with our goals of creating jobs through manufacturing industrial opportunities in southeast Mesa.
With, with all the growth that's anticipated down towards that region, Centon Valley and everything, I mean, is, is there discussions about a, a plant that serves, a larger capacity plant that serves the area regionally? Like, Valvis is a pretty good-sized plant. I mean, that puts out a lot of output.
I can tell you, I, I haven't been part of those discussions of, of any regional plant to be located there.
I mean, does Queen, does Queen have capacity to have needs, does Centon Valley have needs? You know, it would be great to be able to get a lot of, a large, because there's a lot of fishery and stuff out there, so.
Right.
Get, get that whole area off. Sorry.
Yes. So six, seven years ago, when we were talking about Superstition Vistas and how that would grow out, I think it was recognized by many, in order for that to really grow out, ultimately at some point Mesa's infrastructure capacity may be required in order to help support that from the beginning. So that's just something that we've, you know, we never made a commitment saying absolutely, but we recognize that that would probably be something we would have to look at in the future. Now, we have capacity beyond the size of the treatment plant. We've, we'll initially start it out at the 24, or what's the?
Signal Butte?
Signal Butte.
Yes, sir, 24.
And then it has full capacity. And then it has full capacity go to what?
48.
48. So we'll build in some, there's, we can double it at some point in the future. So now, that's water treatment. On the wastewater, we are involved in a regional, and that's probably where we do as much regional partnerships as we can, whether it's 91st Avenue, or whether it's the Greenfield Station, Greenfield, yeah, Greenfield Treatment Plants.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Just on a note, I want to make sure that everyone understands that if we have folks who are interested in investing in southeast Mesa, that we do have the capacity in the infrastructure that, as it currently exists, to meet short-term needs. But looking at our strategic plan, we're going to have to make significant investments if we want to continue the kind of economic development successes that we have had over the last couple of years. So these investments that we're talking about today are important for our long-term strategy and continued success, but we are able to handle the growth in the immediate future.
Thank you, that's wonderful. Thank you for bringing that up, very well stated. We're absolutely fine now, but recognizing it'll take, Dan said you think, anticipate this plant would come online when?
2018.
2018. So we're looking well out into the future for this, but that's a very good point. We encourage and are ready to meet all growth demands today, but we want to make sure we're positioned well for the future, long-term future.
Thank you, Chris. And with Chris's help, we've pretty much covered this slide as well.
Sorry.
That's all right. This just shows the different water sources. Again, the, you know, the purple being the Brown Road water, which would diminish over time in southeast Mesa, because it would be needed in northeast Mesa. The red represents the wells. Blue represents the additional new water from the new treatment plant. And the lines, horizontal lines there that are increasing, I guess, just shows the demand out there. And the bottom line is what we know today, which includes Apple and the Grand Canyon University and Development in Eastmark, and then it follows along the curve from the general plan and anticipated needs. As you step up and add additional industry, you can see it would push the, push the limits a little bit, and so that just demonstrates the need for the water treatment plant. So again, just a few more notes on the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant. So it does utilize surface water, which makes it more reliable. It provides redundancy to the Brown Road Plant, and it conserves groundwater for drought. So there's some additional improvements that would be required as well, not just the plant, because we have to get the raw water to the plant from the CAP. There's additional pump stations, wells, and water lines that are also needed, and those are included in the costs when I get to my summary slide. Again, there's, so there's some additional citywide customer demand as well. We focus kind of on southeast Mesa, but there's additional needs throughout the city. Those are largely pump stations and pipes, new pipes. So here's the summary slide for just the water side. I'll be covering the wastewater in a moment. It's $315 million, clearly the largest of which, the category is the customer demand in southeast Mesa. That's the water treatment plant and associated infrastructure. So that's nearly $200 million alone for that. All right, any questions on the water side before I move on to wastewater?
Yeah, no, all of us. Any questions for those on the phone? Apparently not.
Yes, no question.
Yes, Councilmember Benelli?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay, good, thank you. Councilmember Richardson?
The repayment of these, it's, I know they're revenue bonds. Is it solely, solely revenue from the utility system, customer payments and that kind of thing, or do impact fees play a role in this?
They do.
And other, so maybe break down that?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember.
Customers aren't completely on the hook for this number?
Right, well, no, thank you for that question. So as it works today, as impact fees are paid by development today, all of those fees that are collected, the impact fees related to water, wastewater, go to pay off the existing debt service. So it does help to mitigate against the overall cost related to water and wastewater, the enterprise fund, which determines, which has an impact on rates. So as more development takes place, as those fees are paid, it will have an effect of paying down the expense of outstanding debt. So that certainly helps. And then, what also helps is we've been very conservative in our estimation of what we think growth might be in the area. As new accounts come on, and if it's slightly, if it becomes greater than our conservative estimate, whether it's residential or commercial, industrial, then those customers will increase the rate, the contributions of additional revenues into the system also. And if that comes on sooner than we expected, that certainly has a factor of also mitigating against future rate increases also.
I just think that's a kind of important concept for people to understand, that growth doesn't really pay for itself, but kind of helps.
It's kind of a, yeah, it's, you know, we certainly, we're restricted by state law. There's been quite a bit of changes in that that have put some limitations on what we can do, but we are in a position today, the formula allows us to collect the fees and then apply it against the existing debt service that is, that creates pressure in the rate determination.
Okay, on the wastewater side, here's just our bond history, very similar dates, different dollars, of course. Again, would keep us on a four-year cycle if we went in November 2014. Same three categories of projects in wastewater, as I showed you in water. First of which is lifecycle replacement reliability. So this would include a variety of improvements and equipment replacements at our three plants. Again, that's the, we have two owned and operated by Mesa, and a third one, the Greenfield Plant, is a shared partnership with Gilbert and Queen Creek. So we'd have equipment replacements at all of those plants. We'd have citywide manhole sewer rehabilitations, and then lift station odor control improvements as well. Again, just some slides to kind of show you the scale and the scope of the projects in the field that we'd be addressing. Here's some manhole rehabilitation projects. Here's a disinfection project that was done at the southeast plant that was located near Baseline and Recker. This is just a map showing the replacement rehabilitations proposed for 2014 through 2018. You'll see red dots at each of the plants with a little box with the specific project categories. The black boxes are the lift station, odor control stations, rehabs, and then the lines are the sewer replacement or rehab projects. You can see them, a lot of them are in western Mesa.
Can you talk just a little, sorry, Mayor? Can you talk a little bit about the construction there in that section of Main Street? I know that we had opened that street up quite a couple of years ago and did a lot of work in there at that time. Is this in conjunction with light rail construction? This little stretch, it looks like it runs between, oh, I don't know, Horn and Val Vista?
Yeah. I'm not familiar with that exact project, but we can build here. Are you aware of the project on Main Street for wastewater between?
It had a light rail. Go ahead. Come on up. Sorry to get too in the weeds, but just kind of curious, because we have a major transportation project going through that area.
It looks like it's staply to Val Vista.
That'll be a project coordinated with the light rail extension. We have gone through, any place that we have coincident construction?
Member Council, we went, got ahead of the.
Yeah, we did a lot of work there already.
Knowing that eventually we would continue east on Main. We did this project two years ago, a year ago?
Started.
Just, but as we were starting, even the one down further west, we made the decision to go ahead and get those lines replaced now, as opposed to the expense of during, during the light rail construction, or certainly after light rail construction. So this was just to get ahead of that future construction project.
So is this already completed, or is this a project that's happening in the future?
No.
On the slide?
No, that would be happening in the future. That would be coincident with the light rail.
Okay, so that's just the work.
Was it a water line project? We did something ahead of time, Beth, come on, don't be shy.
Yeah, there was a lot of work in that aging infrastructure that had to be done anyway.
Yeah, a lot of stuff.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor. So we did a rather extensive project before the current extension of light rail, and before the coming extension of light rail, where we actually went in and replaced the water and gas lines and separated them and put them on each side of the road so that the service connections wouldn't be crossing the future light rail alignment. But the primary need for those projects was lifecycle replacement. We were getting a lot of breaks in those areas, as I'm sure Jake would tell you, and we're having a lot of issues with the pipelines in those neighborhoods to the south of Main as well, so we did a very extensive, I think it was around $12 million. We also installed some storm drains in Main, because we knew we wanted those in before light rail came as well.
But is this project that we're seeing on the wastewater map, that'll happen during, with light rail construction?
That will happen with light rail, is replacement of the old sewer main.
Got it, thank you.
And he did mention, those were, some of those systems were 50, 60 years old, and they were definitely deteriorated, so, yeah, appreciate that.
Thanks. The next category of projects is our contractual obligations. This one deals specifically with the 91st Avenue Plant, so it's the subregional operating group, we call it SHROG. We're partners with four other cities there, so this would address the capital needs at that plant and for infrastructure leading to the plant. So like the water treatment plant capacity, as we provide new water sources or additional drinking water, certainly we have to take care of the wastewater needs as well. So in southeast Mesa, again, there's quite a need down there. We're already at capacity at our plant, the Greenfield Plant. We have four MGD, million gallons per day, available. We're nearing that right now. We do have the ability to divert and send some of that flow to the 91st Avenue Plant, so we are covered for a while, but the proposal is to have an expansion of the Greenfield Plant for an additional 10 million gallons per day. Again, and that's going to support economic development in that area. Here's a map showing the different plants and their service areas. Blue is the northwest plant. Green is what goes to 91st Avenue all the way down to, and into Phoenix, Tulsa, actually. And we've got the southeast plant in Tan, and then the service area for the Greenfield Plant is in red. Here's a similar slide I showed you for water. This is for wastewater. See, the northwest plant has a capacity of 18 million gallons per day. Southeast Plant's a smaller plant, 8 million gallons per day. 91st Avenue, and this is just Mesa's share or allotment, is 24 million gallons per day. If you look at the bottom box, the Greenfield Plant, Mesa's capacity is just four MGD today, with an expansion in 2018 proposed, would bring us to 14 million gallons per day. At that time, we would anticipate that we would utilize 8 million gallons of the 14 available to us.
And the point I like to always tell folks is that cooperation with the Greenfield Plant, two other cities, its economies of scale, it's a smart way to do regional approaches like those others, and so we hope that that message gets out there and people appreciate it, that these are the right ways to do things and find those economies and save taxpayer dollars when we do things.
Yeah, absolutely, Mayor, and we work very close in coordination with them. They're ready too for expansion. We're all doing it at the same time. That, again, saves money. This is what I just addressed. The customer demand, then, again, it's just continuing to invest in our infrastructure to prepare us for new jobs, new employers, and residential demand as well. What's in here, I guess, this is the citywide portion, I guess. This is largely just some additional investment needed. This is our septic-to-sewer program. You'll see on this slide right here, that represents a little over $2 million. This is my summary slide. Again, I'll call attention to the big number there, one at the bottom, big one at the bottom, but as far as the categories go, the $122 million, that's the expansion of the Greenfield Plant and the required infrastructure to carry the wastewater to the plant. So that concludes my wastewater presentation, and then, any questions on that?
Any questions?
Given the line the septic-to-sewer program's come, where are the lifecycle levels?
We placed it in the citywide customer demand.
Okay.
Yes.
It's within that.
So it's spread out through the, you know, city. Most of it's in eastern Mesa.
Right.
But it's not southeast Mesa.
Right. That's good.
That'll be the important thing to emphasize going forward, that opportunity to pick up customers and better process to get treated water instead of septic systems out in southeast Mesa.
And Councilmember Richardson, he brings up a great point. You know, the education, as we look at these numbers and take a deep gulp, you know, these are big numbers, and, you know, making sure that the voters are really well-educated, have the background and the information, and, you know, the understanding of why we're proposing these things. And I think now more than ever that I remember, there's going to be a tremendous amount of education to get folks there, you know, as we go down the road, so. Councilmembers on the phone, did you have any further questions?
No, Mayor.
Okay, good. Okay, Candace?
So, Mayor and Council, what we have before you today is a proposal to defer to the voters of Mesa in the November 2014 election. There would be a recommendation of four questions. Each question, one for electric, one for gas, not for gas, one for water, one for wastewater. What that would do would be the approval of the authorization for the city to sell bonds regarding those particular areas and for those particular projects, as we highlighted today. The selling of those bonds would not happen until those projects are needed or warranted within the City of Mesa. Again, we talked about some growth areas today, where if that growth did not happen for a couple of years, we obviously would not issue those bonds and not do those projects until it was warranted within the City of Mesa. When those bonds are issued, they are repaid by utility revenues themselves from the utility areas. It does not incur a new or an adjustment to any taxes currently within the City of Mesa. It is solely funded by the utility revenues, as well as we talked about, you know, the impact fees that those new developments would come in and bring in. These projects, as we go forward, every individual project, just like our capital improvement program, when the council adopts a capital improvement program, it is a plan. The same thing with bond authorizations, it is a plan for these particular projects. Each individual project will be brought forward to the city council for approval as we go through the, this is just really authorizing the financial mechanisms that we would use to proceed with these projects.
So what kind of action are we seeking from the council today? Just general direction?
Mayor, right now, we just wanted to present this to you, and assuming we have general agreement, we're heading in the right direction, then we would come back to you on that July 1st date for the actual items to place these on a ballot in November of 2014. So unless there's significant changes or adjustments that you would ask us to consider, otherwise, we would just bring these for, is it a resolution on the first?
Yeah, well, we're gonna, yes, a resolution.
A resolution, calling the election.
Calling the election.
Calling the elections on July 1st.
Okay. Do any councilmembers have any feedback or want any changes from the proposals that you've seen today? Apparently not, it looks like you have that direction.
Thank you.
We'll look forward to seeing that on July 1st. Thank you very much for the time, I appreciate the presentation. We'd like to, our next item on the agenda is to acknowledge receipts of minutes.
I had a plan.
Oh, excuse me. I jumped over this. Looking forward to it, Jennifer, thank you, if you would, please come forward. Yes.
Sure, you're looking forward to it.
Right by it.
I know, I was thinking we were done too, and I looked at you, I'm like, oh, wait a minute.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Isn't this your favorite part?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good morning, I'm Jennifer Rutman, City Auditor, and I'm here to present the audit, proposed audit plan for fiscal year 2014, 2015. And just to preface that, I wanted to remind Council, the reason that we do some of these, do what we do, is to strengthen the accountability of the City of Mesa to its citizens and to maximize efficiencies and the effectiveness of city services. And so at your direction, we develop a plan for the year that takes into account several different things, including requests from Council or the city manager, mandates for things that need to be audited, federal and state mandates, risk assessments, which include consideration of a number of factors that we then weight and put into a numeric scale so that we can actually empirically decide where the risk is and where our resources are best spent. And that, in combination with what we already know needs to be done, and the other factors that aren't in there, determine the audit plan. So with that, what we're proposing for this year, and this has been approved by the Audit and Finance Committee, but is subject to suggestions from you as well. and Finance Committee, but is subject to suggestions from you as well, is the Communications Department, and these are just presented in alphabetical order, not in any order of importance, but the Communications Department, in terms of their procurement and inventory management, the Development and Sustainability Building Safety Division, specifically with regard to the plan review process and the permit and fees and charges that are collected and calculated there. Engineering, the CIP Cub Stadium Project, and that is a post-construction financial review. The Facilities Maintenance Department, to evaluate their controls over efficiency and effectiveness of the services provided to maintain city facilities. And the Payroll Department or Division of the Accounting Department, which we are, is a long overdue follow-up, but after we have implemented an entirely new payroll and timekeeping system, as well as the city's financial system, it's time to take another look at payroll and see if the controls have improved since the last time we looked at it. The next thing on the list was Fleet Services, which we will specifically define our objectives after an additional risk assessment, once we begin that project. Again, subject or open to suggestions by council. Housing and Community Development, we're specifically looking at the grant-funded programs such as CDBG, NSP, and the ARA Grants that the external auditors have also reviewed. Human Resources Safety Services Workers Compensation Program, just looking to see if that's more of a compliance audit, to see whether we're complying with all the applicable policies, laws, and best practices. ITD, we have two audits for ITD. One is the procurement and inventory management process, and this is an end-to-end look at their, the process by which they acquire assets and account for those assets throughout their lifecycle. And the other, there's an ITD slash other audit on there, and that will be determined after preliminary risk assessment as well into where the most, areas of highest risk that we can add the most value for. And Water Resources, again, objectives to be determined. This was one that showed up near the top of our, the risk assessment calculations that I mentioned earlier, so we wanted to make sure we put that on the plan. It's a fairly aggressive plan, we've had to add quite a bit to it. I have four auditors, and it's a big city, so we'll see if we get there. So some of these may have to be put off to the following year, we'll see if we can get as much done in one year as possible. The other things that are on the plan are the ongoing audits that are currently incomplete from this year, and those are listed there for you. And then, the follow-up audits, which is part of our process, to follow up and make sure that after an audit, when a department has agreed to implement certain changes, that those changes have been implemented, and that they address the risks that they were designed to address. And then there's the ongoing other activities that our office does on an annual basis, which are our citywide unannounced cash counts, because all sites that handle cash in the city are subject to unannounced audit. Our assistance to other city departments, we actually appreciate when we are contacted by other departments, which, believe it or not, happens, and they request our assistance with process evaluation and design, and to see that they've got controls in place to maximize the achievement of their objectives. We also investigate fraud and ethics hotline complaints that we receive through the city's anonymous hotline, in addition to complaints that we receive directly into our office. And we also perform an annual payment card industry data security standards review, which has to do with the operational side of PCI DSS requirements. And that is to make sure that we're protecting our customers' credit card information at the sites that we take that, take credit card payments. And then, last but not least, the special consulting requests that we get from the council or the city manager. And so with that, I would ask if you have any input for the plan, or if you would approve it as presented.
Questions for our auditor? I know this has been vetted through Audit and Finance, Councilmember Richardson's is the chair of that, and any feedback you have, please?
Yeah, give a little bit of new respect for Mayor Finter, and the time he spent chairing that committee and the dizzying array of numbers and plans that get put through there. But I had a question for Chris, about how you felt your department heads were doing in responding to audits and audit plans and corrections. You know, it's kind of come to our attention that it's taken a little bit of time sometimes to implement changes that are recommended through the audit department. And so what's the plan for making sure that we get better compliance out of our department heads when audit findings are implemented and changes need to be put in place?
So, and Jennifer and I have talked about this, and so I think the key is that we just have to continue, she'll bring those to me, and we can bring those to the higher tension, we can, I think it's just one of those things that it comes to them, they may try to make changes in process and procedures. I don't think it's a willful not complying, I think it's just also a lot of other things going on, but we just need to make it a priority. I think that when there are critical path issues that need to be changed, those get done. I think a lot of the other stuff are, that we, is just better discipline in making sure that we're, I think Jennifer does a good job of helping us recognize changes in process that would be preventative against future actions. And those are the kind of things that, probably the hardest things to implement, because maybe they don't see the most urgent need for them right away, which is probably not a good practice, but certainly if, we'll, I'll work closer with Jennifer in making sure we can also help her in tracking those changes and work with the departments to get those done.
Yeah, good. I just wanted to emphasize the importance of this position was put in by the voters as a charter officer, and emphasize that we pride ourselves on handling taxpayer and utility ratepayer money with the utmost respect, and make sure that we're transparent in our transactions. And just, it's important to send a lead, from the council side, to send a little leadership and say, look, this is important to us, please comply when the auditor comes. She's not your enemy, she's there to make sure that we're protecting taxpayer assets. And so I would just want to emphasize the importance of department heads and departments, and I know they're busy, they're very busy, and they do great work, but making sure that we implement audit findings as quickly as possible, so we don't have multiple two and three audits, follow-ups situation, so, thank you.
Wonderfully stated. Councilmember Luna?
Jennifer, when you discover that there's some deficiency, do you go back to the department at the end of the year to make sure that that deficiency was taken care of?
Well, that's part of our follow-up process. Generally, it's one year after the audit report has been issued and the department has, we've come to an agreement with the department as to what action they are going to take. And so a year later, we will double-check with them, make sure that those things have been implemented. And if they haven't, we work with them to continue to make sure that they get addressed. Thanks.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval and a second. Councilmembers on the phone, any information or input?
No, Mayor.
No, Mayor.
Okay, wonderful. So motion and second, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, it looks like unanimous. So thank you for your work, we appreciate all that you do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, now I think we can go to item number two, which is acknowledge receipts of minutes in various boards and committees. We have a motion by Councilmember Richardson's and second by Councilmember Luna. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, good. I'd like to hear reports on meetings or conferences attended. I know everybody's really busy, but we've had a long meeting. Sounds like we'll pass on that one. Scheduling of our future meetings, Mr. Brady?
Reminder, tomorrow, Councilman Calvin, I was having coffee with a council member at the Visit Mesa offices from 7:30 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. Then also Saturday evening, afternoon, Councilmembers Summers and Luna will be co-hosting a water safety community event at Skyline Aquatic Center from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then our next study session will be Thursday, June 12th. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you. Looks like we'll take a motion for adjournment. Do we have a motion and second? All in favor, say aye. Aye, you're adjourned. Thank you.